All right, I will call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody to our reorganizational meeting for city councils Tuesday, January 2nd, two thousand and twenty-four. For in Trade Institute, third floor, please rise for the invocation by Councilman Randy Allison, followed by the flag salute.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to do many things, but first of all, to commit this year into your hands, two thousand and twenty-four, as we begin a new, a new session of council. There are many things that are going to be on our laps that that we're aware of, but there's going to be many that come that we're not, but we ask for guidance, we ask for wisdom. We ask for Lord God, your favor upon each and every one of us, not for ourselves, Lord God, but for the good of this community and the good of the the people that live here. And we pray that this is going to be a fruitful year, Lord God, for all of us, and we ask it in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the book of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three, limited courtesy, the floor, we've had no requests tonight, we'll move to item four, item four, the swearing in of elected officials for the city this cycle. I believe the mayor is not making it tonight, he was previously sworn in, but four of us on council were on the ballot, reelected. Our treasurer is here, Kevin Mackey as well, so Judge Nancy Butts, welcome, thank you for being here and for doing this for us. If we all, Bonnie, myself, John, Vince, Kevin, we can pop up here and she will do the swearing in of the five of us. Janice will be after you tomorrow. I know. All right. Judge Butts, thank you again very much, appreciate you being here to help us through this tonight. All right. We'll move to item five, nominations for president of city council and votes, I will open the floor for nominations for president of city council. Mr. Allison.
I'd like to nominate Adam Yoder as president of city council.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Motion in a second. Or nomination in a second, excuse me, are there other nominations for president of city council? Okay, I will, I will close nominations. Any questions on the nomination? All right, we'll take the vote, Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi. Yes. Mr. Bider. Yes. Mrs. Katz. And myself, yes. Six to zero. We'll move to item six, nominations for vice president of city council and vote, I'll open the floor for nominations.
I would like to nominate Eric Bider, vice president.
Is there a second on that nomination?
Second.
Motion in a second, are there other nominations for vice president? Okay, I'll, I'll close the floor for nominations. Any discussion on the nomination? Okay, I'll call the vote. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
No.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider. Yes. Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm, yes, as well, five to one. We'll move to item seven, discussions on committee meetings and dates. So traditionally, we've had a handful of committees, a couple of which are probably the heavy movers, a couple of which are sporadically active, et cetera. Everybody here is either chair or on multiple committees. So open the floor for discussions on that between times of existing meetings, individuals that have interest in shifting committees that they're on, or to Councilman Mackey's comment here a little bit earlier before the meeting, maybe even shifting the committee structure in general, so I'll open the floor for discussion on that, so we can kind of see if we're gonna, if we would like to change anything or keep it as it is, so comments from other members of council. Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, yeah, bring it up here, absolute, no, no worries.
What did I do, I didn't do it right, did I?
There you go.
Okay.
You can blame that on me. I'm used to getting in trouble. Not too much trouble, Judge.
All right, back to item seven, discussions on committee meetings, I'll open the floor for discussion, Mr. Pelisi.
I have a question that if, if we did choose to decide the structure, to create a new structure for committee meetings, does that have to be formalized now in this meeting, or is it something that we could? Are, is there, is there almost a way to table this and just continue on how we've been doing it until we get enough information to see legally what we can and can't do?
Yeah, there, there's nothing to vote on, it's simply a discussion item. Austin White is on, if we have legal questions specifically, but if, if we decide to change things up, whether we would slim it down to one or two, expand it, it's simply a change in our codification. We simply update the administrative code accordingly, and that would be that, so.
Okay, yeah.
Well, I think, just for the, you know, for the sake of anybody that's gonna watch this meeting or is here in person, what I suggested was, it seems to me that some of these committee meetings maybe don't serve a purpose anymore, I mean, it's been a while now since we've actually taken any official action at a committee meeting. A recommendation to vote, anything like that, and that is because we are still doing them virtually, so you know, my, my thought is, is that there are probably you know, seventy, eighty percent of the stuff that shows up on a regular city council agenda every two weeks, doesn't really need to be discussed at a committee meeting. And the things that do warrant extra discussion, and there are definitely items that come up every two weeks that warrant that type of discussion, those are the things that we would put on whatever we want to call this new committee, and instead of having us all serve on multiple committees, I would suggest we start some sort of a rotation. Whereas three of us sit on this committee for three months and and there, there, there could be a way to figure that out, so it's equal, so we all have the same amount of time on this committee, whatever we would want to call it. You know, we would save money, we would save the city money on captioning, I mean, we are now currently paying the caption for committee meetings, we can knock that down to one, so it's just something that I've been thinking about for quite a while. And I know personally, in my, in my new position that I have now during the day, it is rather difficult for me to attend any committee meeting, really, so. Yeah, those are my thoughts, I think it's something that we should explore, and I don't know how other people feel about that, but that's kind of how, how I think maybe we, you know, I feel like these committee meetings are falling into that category of this is just how we've always done it, so this is how we're gonna keep doing it, and I think it's something that we can maybe update a little bit, so.
Mrs. Katz.
You said Austin is on, on.
Yep.
Austin, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Austin, is there any rhyme or reason why we do have the committee reason, reasons, perhaps we, oh, gosh.
So if the question is, why do we have the, is it, is it, why do we have the committees, or why do we have the committees meeting at particular time?
Do we have to have all of these meetings that we do twice, twice a month? Is it, is there anything in the third class city code that states that this is the way it should be done?
No, so that, sorry, the number of committees, as far as which committees exist, is a matter of the city's administrative code, so as far as, you know, the committees existing, that's something, if it were to be changed, would require an ordinance and the normal process of passing an ordinance as far as first reading, second reading, publication and all of that. But as, as in terms of when the committees meet, the, that is based on the administrative code, decision of the president of council. There's no requirement that a committee meet any particular number of times. The president of city council can decide how often they're gonna meet. The only thing, of course, is that if you're, when you're gonna publish, or when you're gonna describe the, the meetings that are gonna be made, you of course want to do that at a public meeting and publish it then in the paper, so people know that it's happening and post it on the website, along with all the other typical sunshine act things like posting the agendas and things like that. So yeah, the city council president has the discretion to decide when they're going to meet based on the way the administrative code is presently written.
So really, we've been doing this because this is the way it's always been, instead of going after this, and it's right now, it's costing us more money. Number two, it's, you know, we don't vote at these committee meetings, we don't even get a say, we, this is what we approve for to pass on city council, it's just a discussion. So you know, you look at this and the main purpose of it anymore isn't functioning correctly. So what John is saying, I think, is, is correct, it's, it's to me, it's, it is a waste of time, because all we're doing is, is talking, you know, and nothing else. And we could probably do that maybe even once a month. Maybe twice a month.
So, I, I mean, a couple, a couple of different thoughts, I mean, to, to Councilman Mackey's point, right, we, we have a handful that don't meet that often, certainly, I, I get that, like housing needs, like that kind of stuff, certain. I get that, you know, the, the main heavy hitters, finance, public works, economic revitalization, public safety, they meet more often than not. I think, a, a, and I don't know this for a fact, I'd have to go back and look at minutes whenever we moved to a third class optional charter system, when those were originally codified, and at that meeting that is in discussion, my thought is, I'm guessing that those committees were formed in the way they were formed for a couple of different reasons, I mean, we've had meetings where we've got twenty-some things on the agenda, all of which are very important and impactful, that we need to flush out a lot of details, right? There's a lot of work that has been done in the past in those committee meetings, when we run into those instances, those instances aren't the majority of the time, right? They are in the minority of the time, but they do streamline that process of flushing things out and making it a little bit more efficient. I'd probably think also that I, when, when these committees originally formed, there was also probably a part of council's work that might have been factored into this, well, hey, we've got some ideas in particular areas, and we need a standing working committee to kind of flush them out, whether it's in the twenty-first century, looking at technology use in our public safety systems, whether it's looking at new ways for economic development in the city, for example. You know, I, I would think there's a part of that there as well. And then thirdly, just formal oversight, you know, I think normally we've used finance for that a lot, when we were looking at whether it's quarterly budget projections, that kind of stuff, I know in the past, we've had kind of quarterly conversations about public safety data, that kind of stuff, those, those committees formulate, I think, a good conduit to have that as well. So that's kind of, I think maybe the counter, to what John's saying, but point well taken, I, I, Mr. Allison, please.
Yeah. I think there's some middle ground between the two ideas that are two points of view. Because there are, there are times in the committees where we're not voting, but we're asking a lot of questions, we're getting information, and it's valuable, you know, we get some things answered, or have whoever we're listening to, or whatever person or entity is, is being represented digs in and finds information that's valuable to us and them, so. But I, I do think it warrants a revamp, let's say, you know, we talked about the history of committees and before we had the strong mayor form of government changeover in the early seventies, we had a commission form of government where this, each city council member headed a department. So they didn't necessarily need committees, and that transition when we became strong there. And of course, there was no technology back then, you know, compared to what we have now, so that in-person kind of meeting was essential to, to transfer written information. But I think it's worth examining what we can do with, you know, meeting in person, but, but have technology be a part of it, and also not every, let's face it, not every item, if, if we could come up with some kind of bar that the items have to meet to, to be considered in committee. You know, it takes some thought and maybe some research, but there's, there's some that can easily transition to the whole council on Thursday nights, rather than, than add more items to an agenda.
I mean, I, to get. I love that idea, yeah, some sort of criteria, you know, I mean, if it's, if it's a new contract that we've never, with a new company, absolutely, if it's, if we're spending more than a certain amount of money, hundred percent, you know, but yeah, I like the idea of some, some bars that you have to beat before it gets put on a committee, and again, I, again, I, I do agree, there are things that need to be discussed ahead of the city council meeting, because there are a lot of times when we say, hey, we're missing this, we're missing that, we need a little bit more information before Thursday. I think that all of those things still need to happen, and I, you know, we've got a lot of experience now, I mean, council president Yoder's gone into his fifth year, Iowa vice president Bider now, I mean, I'd like to think both of these guys can look at the stuff that's coming up and, and kind of now at this point, say, ah, no, 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 this one probably we might need to look at a little closer, and I, and I have full confidence in regardless of my vote tonight. I have confidence in both of those, both of these guys to, to, to make that decision, I mean, that's part of their, I mean, it's part of council president Yoder's job, and I have full confidence that he would be able to decide which things we need to talk about, and and again, will there be an occasional meeting that maybe lasts three hours, because we only have now one committee and we couldn't get them all onto the committee, that, sure, but you know what, we, this is what we signed up to do, and if it's a three-hour meeting, then it's a three-hour meeting. But I think a majority of the time, we, we might just find out that we have one committee and there's two or three things that go on it, and the rest of the stuff, we just talk about on Thursday night, so.
And, I mean, I'm sorry, but, but in. And, and to that point, John, if, if there is a crowded agenda, we can always ask the administration, well, does this really have to go, you know, is this, is there a, a use-by date on this or a pass-by date, but Eric, how many items today did we say, oh, we do this every year, it's the same, yeah, we have, so.
So one, one thing that I would just caution against, again, I love the idea, and John, you and I have spoke about this, and I, I'm in agreement, making sure that, looking at this, we could set it up in such a way that we have a, our, we still have our standing committees potentially, because there are going to be areas of expertise that are going to be necessary, just frankly, John, when it comes to public safety, I would rather have you looking at that with your background than have me looking at that, not having any experience in that realm whatsoever. So keeping those standing committees in the background, when we do need that extra help or extra expertise, I mean, Liz is a great example, as somebody on finance who's been around as long as she has, just to know what kind of questions to ask as well, but naming this other committees, more like a special committee, if you will, so that way we can get the rotations in every couple of months and get everybody the experience of dealing with these other issues.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point, yeah, and I, and I think that also there are a lot of times when more than just the members of that committee show up to meetings, and I think if there's something on there, you know, if it's, if it's me, Vince, and Bonnie, and we feel like Eric and Randy and Liz could be a little more useful on something, and they're not on the committee that month, then we say, come on, you guys try and make it to the meeting this month, or this week, so, but yeah, I do agree that, yeah, I, I don't claim to be an expert in many things, so. So I appreciate your vote of confidence there, but, but yeah, no, I just, again, I, I, I personally would like to explore this a little bit more and, and see what we can come up with, I, I think it could save the city a little bit of money in terms of, you know, advertising, captioning, that sort of thing, I know it's not gonna be a lot of money, but.
Yeah, a little bit helps.
Penny saved, his penny earned.
Absolutely, well, I, I mean, yeah, let's, let's explore it, absolutely. John, I, I kind of asked you to take lead on that, if you would be so kind. I think between the group of us, engaging us as you need to is, is more than appropriate, but I think you've got some good ideas. Eric, I think you've got a, a couple of good little nuggets there that you brought forward as well. And, and let's see what we can come up with, I think in the time being.
Yeah.
We should, I think to be safe, advertise the, the meetings as we normally do, in the event we either need a committee or anything like that, I think we can kind of maybe informally work through one or two primarily, and start to implement informally kind of what we just talked about, right, can kind of sift through some stuff. Does it really need to be or not be, for example? So. Okay. Um. Finance, public works, public safety, economic revitalization, the big four. Do we need to explore a time change on any of those committees? For anybody? Okay. Is anybody interested in changing makeup of committees individually? Okay. Mr. Mackey.
I just had one request.
Yeah.
So we have the finance meeting at one o'clock, if we could just move it back a half hour, because a lot of times when I need to get on them, I'm usually dealing with the taxpayer or working on some other project, because I only have two people in my office at that time, and that would just give me another ten, fifteen minutes to prepare for the meeting, pull it up. If we just have it at one, at one, at one thirty instead of the one o'clock that's at right now.
Okay. Liz isn't here.
I know, so I, I just figured I'd bring it forward to you guys, and I can discuss it with Liz at a later time, but.
Eric, Randy, does that work for you, that time?
The only concern I would have is we have public safety
Yeah.
of the same day at two thirty.
No, public works.
Public works, yeah. At two thirty, and sometimes our finance meetings in the past have run
Yeah, yeah, they do.
Long.
Yeah.
Sometimes unnecessarily, but.
But this is all, it, it, it is a valid point that you make. Yeah. Okay. We'll try to connect with Liz tomorrow. See if that's.
Public works.
Earlier. Or, we're, we're actually just switched lots. Yeah, we could do that, we could switch lots, but that work for you, do public works at one, two thirty, finance?
Okay with you. Vince?
Yeah.
No, I'm, I think what they're recommending, Eric, is that we just flip-flop public works and finance lines.
The times.
And do public works at one.
Would that work for you?
I'm, I'm perfectly content with that.
Yeah.
And then like, we can check with Liz tomorrow if that would work for her.
Randy, is that okay with you?
Yeah, you're the one.
Public works.
And go at one o'clock?
And then finance would be two thirty.
Do public works at one.
At one, yeah.
And then do finance at two thirty instead. To accommodate Kevin.
Yeah, I can do.
What, two thirty work for you, Kevin?
Oh, yes, yes, I, I just need a little time for, because as one o'clock stands right now, like my, I have my staff coming right back in, and there are times when I have to like refocus my efforts from whatever is I was working on, whatever taxpayer I was working on, and then go right into that committee meeting, it would just give me a little bit extra time to prepare for things throughout the year.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other comments or items of the, comments, questions, et cetera, relating to committee meeting dates and times? But what I think we'll do is we'll advertise for, for the first three months, and then see what we come up with here the first couple of months of the year, one committees, and then we'll go from there. Cool. Thank you all very much, Kevin, thank you as well. All right, we'll move to item eight, announcements, our next meeting, our full meeting will be Thursday in two days, January fourth, seven PM, right here, Trade Trace two. Our upcoming meetings will be announced as we advertise them. Any comments from members of council? I would just say, congratulations to Mr. Bider for being elected vice president, I'm looking forward to working with you over this year together, in serving the city and, and, and leading council. And I would also say thank you, Bonnie, for the past two years, kind of getting into this and kind of figuring a lot of stuff out, I've been very fortunate to have you beside me, working with me and talking through a lot of stuff, and I'd also commend Randy. Over the past couple of years specifically, you've been a really good sounding word for me at times, and I really learned a lot from you the first two years watching you, and just wanted you to publicly know that, we've talked about that a little bit, but I've been very fortunate to have both of you right here, and I know Eric will be equally fortunate to have both of you here the next two, the next couple of years, et cetera, as well, so thank you both very much.
Thank you.
And if I can just thank Bonnie specifically, you and I had a conversation offline, but your confidence to nominate me for this position.
And if I can just thank Bonnie specifically, uh, you and I had a conversation offline, but your confidence to uh nominate me for this position uh is greatly appreciated. And thank you again immensely for your continued support.
Thank you. You're quite welcome.
Any other comments from members of council? Any comments from the administration, Mr. Black? Um, any comments from the public?
Bernie, do you have anything to say?
Um, no comments from the news media. I don't know if they're here. Uh, I think a motion in a second for adjournment.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second all in favor of adjournment.
All right.
Does this mean?
Being adjourned. Thank you all very much. We'll see you in two days.
Take the second place, Benny.